It's hard not to. Couldn't find where it went, but I know.
Seven o'clock. Look, and I gotta be neat. Cause everybody's putting their name on it, so do I. I don't quite know why we did that.
Do you sign everything else, Crans?
I sign very little, Crans, actually.
Do you really?
Yeah. You know, I guess light things.
How is Crans doing?
Crans is crazy. He's fine.
Crazy, crazy.
We'll go ahead and get started. It is December 1st at 7:01, and it's a New Windsor Council meeting. If you guys would join me in a place of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind you that the town meetings are recorded by electronic means, and that the meeting will follow on a Friday. Anyone who wishes to have a matter of faith in this end will need to submit the topic to me by the last minute of the day of the month, by the close of the day at 3:00 PM. These items will be approved. We're gonna start off with the approval of the number 3, 2021 council meeting minutes. Is everybody ready?
I'll make the motion to approve. Second?
I second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody ready? All right, we're going down to the mayor's report. I've recently participated in a couple different fundraisers. One was for Robin Park play, and the other was Babylon Vol, Reeds cause All America. I think we had a really nice turnout, and I was proud to be part of it. And I defer the rest of it to the old business section. So moving along, we're gonna go to the council committees, and we'll start with community enhancement with Councilman Jaren Griffin Lindeman.
All right, thank you, and hello to everyone. And I would like to mention that tonight...
Sharon, can you mute your mic? They have, these ones are already working.
Oh, so mute the one on here?
Yeah, you don't have to touch it at all.
Okay. Is that better?
That better?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I would like to start out by saying that tonight was our tree lighting ceremony, and I'd like to thank again Rebecca Price for doing such an outstanding job of getting us all in the Christmas spirit. It was wonderful. And I just wanted to take a minute to talk about our public works staff. I mean, they have worked tirelessly to get this town looking so Christmasy, and the park was no exception. It looked great up there. And they've done all of this while still working on water main issues and things like that. So, a lot of different things been going on. Thank you so much to Wayne and Josh for doing such a great job out there. I also want to talk about the wreaths, because all the wreaths up. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Hoffman and my husband Josh and myself. We all put our, we put the ribbons on the wreaths, the bows, and put the lights in, and that was fun. We had a lot of fun doing that and got them ready. And then the Public Works crew took them out, and they really put up wreaths that hadn't been up in years. And they even had the electrician out there putting in sockets and poles that had been replaced and things like that. So, they went over and above to get this town looking really fabulous for Christmas and for the holiday season. Want to talk about the town park for a minute? Because now that our town park is, you know, it's almost all finished. We still have phase two to go through. But now that we have the town park, we have to decorate that too. So, we were all talking about it today, Public Works and the town staff here. And so, we're gonna use some of the lights that we already have to decorate all the trees in the parks. All the trees are gonna have white lights on them. And we're just purchasing some garland and bows to put on the fencing. And we have this idea that we'd like to put a Victorian sleigh in the middle of the park. And so, things like that would, we'd have to get them at auction, we think. Where we can get a really nice one at auction. So, we won't have that this year, but that will be coming forward. We also thought it'd be nice to have the bows in the park match the bows on the wreaths. But we can get them, well, we can't really get them in time for Christmas right now. And they'll be a whole lot cheaper. They'll be a third cheaper after Christmas. So, we'll order them in January. So, we'll have, you know, 15 or so bows extra so that we can decorate with them. And they'll match the wreaths that are up in town. I also want to talk about the shipping cost for the wreaths, because at the last council meeting, we voted to, you know, pay for extra shipping. And it was brought to my attention that perhaps I could call the company and see if we couldn't get some of that shipping alleviated, because we had not been aware of that at the very beginning. So, I did call the company, and we saved $483. So, the shipping was originally $786 for one order and $621 for the other. And it ended up being $786 and $138, for a total of $924. And that saved us $483. So, that was a great suggestion by one of our town residents. Followed through on it, and it paid off. And then, from here on out, I will be working on the hometown hero banner. So, that's what's coming up for me. And I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has. Okay, then I think I'm good.
Any questions from Ms. Griffin Lindeman? All right, moving forward to Public Works, with Councilman Hoffman.
Good evening, everyone. A couple things from Public Works. I'm happy to announce that we do have a new employee. You heard Councilman Griffin Lindeman mention him. That's Josh. Josh Small. He came on board just in time to help install the Christmas wreath that she's talked about, and also to put in a lot of hours on the water main break. So, we're happy to have him join the crew as well. The Public Works crew will be picking up leaves for just another week. So, this week and next week, make sure you get all your leaves out, and they will take care of those. And moving into January, the Christmas tree pickup. They're going to pick up Christmas trees on Tuesdays, the January 4th, 11th, and the 18th. So, make sure you have your tree out, where you typically put out your yard waste, and the time will come around and pick those up for you. Lastly, the Planning Commission, as I mentioned last month, we were not going to meet in November, so no November meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, moving forward with water and sewer. Chair, Councilman Hall.
All right, so basically, our main concern for the past month was the water main break on Wakefield Valley Road. We had a break about a two-foot section of our main water line. It was, I would say, our worst nightmare. It's our, it's the main water line coming into town, supplies all the water for the town. So, we were really concerned about that. Director Myers got on top of it right away. About the whole weekend, he probably got about four hours of sleep. So, he really cared and really took care of the town. We ended up having the door tags. That was actually very effective. Director Myers told me that he saw a significant decrease in water usage after we got the word out. So, we're really proud about that. I just want to thank all the staff. All the staff came in. We had volunteers to go around and do the door tags. All the council helped out in one way or another. We distributed probably almost a pallet and three-quarters worth of water to residents to help alleviate the water usage as well. So, going forward, the Director Myers is working with the various crews to install leak detection systems and also emergency aid improvements, so that in the event this happens again, we're better prepared. So, we'll continue working on that and working on our emergency plan to update that. But we're really thankful for the town residents for really listening to the warnings and really helping out, because we really, without that conservation, we could have lost water in parts of the town. So, thanks to everybody for doing that, and that's my report. Any questions?
Thank you, William. Moving forward to public safety with Councilman Kornick.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending in person. And to the citizens online, thank you for attending. I don't have an issue or concern with public safety, but I'll just echo the sentiments of Councilman Hall in terms of the town coming together and working together to conserve water. Councilwoman Schultz actually sent, started the whole chain of sending out emails and texts to us personally. And my wife and I got out and talked to some of our neighbors on our street. So, I wanted to say, I think that was an example of what we can do when we come together. And it was in such a short period of time over the beginning of a holiday. So, that may be the key to what we do for other events that are probably more positive than conserving water. But I think it is a testimony to what can be done, you know, through grassroots community efforts. So, again, I'll defer to Deputy Calusi on public safety reports and go from there. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We're moving forward to economic development with Councilwoman Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm gonna be an echo and thank the Public Works staff for, I mean, folks just have no idea how much they all do, and they're a little shorthanded right now. So, and I want to thank Councilwoman Griffin Lindeman for pulling together the Christmas tree ceremony tonight. That was lovely. Thank you very much. For economic development, for those of you who haven't already heard me talk about this, this is Carol County Shop Small Passport Week. And there are dozens of businesses all around Carol County, including several here in New Windsor that are participating. It runs through Saturday. If you pick up one of those passports at one of the small businesses and you visit eight locations, your passport can get put into a drawing for several $50 gift certificates that are good at any of the participating businesses. And it's paid for with money through tourism, so it doesn't cost the businesses anything to participate. And it's a great way to get folks to go to our small businesses, so shop small. On the, connecting back to the water main break, one of the things that we did, Councilman Hall and I, was we met with county emergency management staff on Saturday here at Town Hall. And one of the things that they did was they sent out an emergency alert. So, some of you may have gotten phone calls, some of you may have gotten texts. We posted that information on our Facebook page too. So, if you're not yet signed up for that, please sign up. We actually had a lot of people just walk into Town Hall because they got that alert to get the bottled water. So, it's, there's no easy way to communicate with 700 households in an emergency situation. So, we need the citizens to do their part too and get connected with the different communication tools that we have. So, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Moving on, we're gonna go to Town Manager Gary Dye.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going with the water main break. I'll try to, I got a pretty extensive update and kind of a history. I'll try to skip anything that's already been said. But the location of the water main break was in our supply line from the Bauer Sox well to the chlorine tank. And it was on this side of Wakefield Valley Road on the Bazler Farm. So, late in the day Thursday, November 18th, Director Myers received an alarm for low water level at the chlorine tank. Public Works and MES started inspecting the line on foot Friday morning. That was November 19th, and found the leak at approximately 1:00 that day. Director Myers called Councilman Hall, who then notified the mayor and council per our established protocol. Director Myers, priority during an emergency, and especially one of this magnitude, is to focus on the emergency situation and find a solution. Mid-Atlantic Utilities mobilized crews and started excavating and de-watering the water line and farm field Friday afternoon. As you can imagine, the work was complicated by access and water from the leak in the farmer's field. Mr. Bazler, the property owner, was understanding and accommodating for us. Mid-Atlantic Utilities returned Saturday morning, was able to repair the leak by around 1:00. It was mentioned it was a longitudinal break, about 24 inches in length, and a 20-foot section of pipe was replaced. The water line had to be sanitized and recharged first, then the chlorine tank had to be drained, sanitized, and filled. So, on Sunday morning, Director Myers started to slowly release water from the chlorine tank into the system to fill the stand tank at Rowell Road. Director Myers contacted a water hauling contractor in the city of Westminster about getting water for the tanks, the tankers. Jeff Glass, who's the Director of Public Works for City of Westminster, was very helpful in accommodating. He, Jeff, provided technical assistance for Wayne, and the city of Westminster did not charge us for the water. We had to pay for the hauling, but they did not charge us for the water. The reason for hauling water at the time was to fill the chlorine tank while the repair was being done. And then, the stand tank, the stand tank at Rowell Road is filled by the chlorine, the chlorine tank, and provides the majority of the water to our system. Thanks to the water conservation by the residents and the storage levels in both the existing tanks, we were able to meet the system demand until we could safely add water from the chlorine tank. Many of you probably noticed or got word, there was a boil water advisory, which was required by MDE and Carroll County Health Department as standard protocol. The boil water advisory was posted on the website and Facebook on Saturday by early afternoon. In addition, door hangers were printed, folded, and distributed by volunteers to all the water customers Saturday afternoon as well. Councilman Hall and Kalina contacted BJ's and purchased three pallets of water for residents to use during the boil water advisory. So, in accordance with the MDE regulations and requirements, samples were taken Monday morning and sent to a lab. And the water advisory, boil water advisory had to remain in effect until we got the test backs, negative test back at approximately 12:00 on Tuesday. So, I want to thank Director Myers, first and foremost, for his leadership and doing a great job handling the situation. For several days, beginning late day Thursday on the 18th through Tuesday, November 23rd, Wayne put in 63 hours of overtime, overtime during that time. And as mentioned, he probably slept maybe three or four hours. He was coordinating with Maryland Environmental Service, MDE, City of Westminster, Carroll County Utilities, Councilman Hall, town staff, and others. Wayne was under a lot of pressure and made very good but difficult decisions, all in the best interest of the town and time to get the thing fixed as quickly as possible. This has been said before, but I want to take this opportunity to say it again tonight, that New Windsor is very fortunate to have such a dedicated and caring Public Works director. He's willing to put his life on hold a lot of times and do whatever it takes to get the job done. I know firsthand personally what Wayne does day in and day out, and especially during emergencies, and cannot imagine where the town would be without him. As far as all the other volunteers, I have to reach out and give a shout out, because there were so many people that did help. Many volunteers helped in any way they were asked, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. All the council members volunteered at some point, handing out water, distributing the door hangers, whatever was needed. Josh Small, who's our new Public Works employee, worked many overtime hours helping Wayne. He just started November 10th, and wasn't long before he was on his first major water main break. Kalina Barzak and her whole family were a huge help. Kalina worked Saturday and Sunday. And her husband Johnny and dad Ken volunteered Saturday. Ken actually used his personal truck to go to BJ's to pick up the water. And Kalina, Johnny, and Ken loaded 150 cases off the pallets onto the trailer themselves, and brought them back here for distribution to everybody. Planning Commission member Drew Strine and his wife Peggy helped distribute door hangers. Planning Commission Chairman Mark Schultz and Councilman Kornick's wife Darnella also volunteered. Our code enforcement officer Nicole helped with preparation of the door hangers on Friday. I'm sure I'm missing somebody, but I really want, it was a team effort for sure, and it does go to show what can be done if everybody works together. So, again, thanks to everyone who helped in any way. The Carroll County, MML Carroll County Food Drive, just a reminder, it is Sunday, December 5th, from 10:00 to 12:00. Mayor Green was checking on a location for that. Do we have a location yet, Mayor? No?
No.
All right. The town will receive donations at Town Hall until this Friday. And then, donations will be collected, collected at Town Hall. They'll have to be delivered to the MML location either Saturday or Sunday, the 4th or 5th of December. The Deomman Inn Archaeological Dig, the Archaeological Society of Maryland finished the dig at Deomman Inn November 6th and 7th. And as you recall, there was an email from Esther Doyle Reed dated October 27th, and forwarded to the mayor and council on the status of the dig, the findings, and what specifically to do with the findings. We discussed this at the November 3rd council meeting. So, we need a decision as to what to do with the artifacts found. And the options are the town to keep them or deed them to the state archaeological facility where they can store them in a climate-controlled, in climate-controlled conditions. So, do you all have any input on what you all want to do with that? I'm gonna have to let them know sooner or later.
Kim, did you talk to the Heritage Committee at all about that?
No, but they don't have room to store it either, because they've got a lot of artifacts from their own digs. So, just for the preservation, I would think it would make more sense for the, I mean, where would the town put them?
Yeah, that's...
You know? And they do need to be in climate control, or they start disintegrating, so, yeah.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Everybody think that's a good idea.
Do you need a vote?
Probably, yeah.
I'll make a motion to put it into a, I guess, the state facility?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Kevin? Thank you. We'll let them know. Two more items here. On-call Engineering Services rebid. We will be rebidding the on-call Engineering Service contract. GMB has been the town's on-call engineer since 2011. The contract needs to be updated, and thought this was a good opportunity to put out a request for proposals and rebid the services. So, I'm working on an RFP, and we will provide, and will provide updates at future council meetings and work sessions. The Bauer Sox Farm Lease of agricultural farmland was rebid. The current lease agreement between the town and Jerry and Richard lease expires the end of the year, December 31st. Request for bids was prepared and advertised in two local farming agricultural publications. Bids were due Wednesday, November 24th, and we received six bids. One bid was submitted late and will not be considered. And references will be checked, and bids will be evaluated, and plan to have a summary of the bids and recommendation to you all at the December work session. And that's all I had for my report.
Any other questions? All right, moving forward to the Public Works Director, Wayne Myers.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd just like to thank everybody for the assistance during our emergency situation. I couldn't have done it without everybody. We had a lot of help from the city of Westminster. Jeff Glass, who's the Director of, Public Works Director of Westminster, really helped me out with calculations on how much water it would take to fill up the line, how long it would take to get to town after we filled the line up, and operational assistance as well. I'd like to thank Carroll County Utilities for pinpointing the line and the field for us that allowed us to dig the area a lot quicker than expected. I'd like to thank Councilman Hall for his assistance. He really did a great job coordinating with everybody and just really taking the lead as far as getting notices out. That was one less thing that I had to worry with, and I could focus on the task at hand. I had a lot of help from Kalina as well. She was a great help and came in, and her family as well, and put a lot of hours in. You can just tell that we have, you know, a caring community and caring staff that are willing to work for the town to do whatever it takes to get the job done. Everybody's really compassionate about the town. I really liked that the community came together and, you know, that everybody was conserving water when we asked them to. That was wonderful. It made the situation less stressful for me, because I feared that we could potentially run out of water. Because of everybody's conservation efforts, we were able to get through this. Because this was a circumstance that probably hasn't happened in quite some time for the town. But, you know, with the age of the line, and that being the main water source, unfortunately, you know, we could probably expect for a situation like this to happen again. However, you know, we would be better prepared. We're gonna make some provisions on the system to better prepare ourselves so we can deal with it more quickly. Anyway, I'd also like to thank Ed Falsgroth. He was a big assistant in trying to help me get the tanks sanitized and helping me with some of the operational features of the distribution system. And I'd like to thank the fire chief as well. Me and the fire chief were on the phone about three or four times a day, if not more. And he was coordinating between me and Carroll County Emergency, the operations center, and really giving the town some good assistance in notifying everybody. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Schultz. She was great. Somebody that I talked to quite frequently also, and really helped us out. It was just great to see everybody come together. I'd like to thank Councilman Hoffman for assisting with the distribution of the bottled water. And we really have a great community. And I appreciate everything that everybody did to help me in this situation. I couldn't have done it without you. Thank you.
Wayne, continuing on with Deputy Calusi.
Good evening, everybody. The care manager's office is open dates to November 1st through November 30th. Responded to 44 calls for service within town limits. Out of those calls for service, only four required reports, which were the following. On November 6th, at approximately 10:42 AM, deputies responded to the 300 block of Main Street regarding a violation of a protective order. Investigation revealed that the suspect contacted the victim utilizing a joint friend's phone number. Deputies contacted the friend, at which time it was uncertain if the friend sent the messages or not. The victim was referred to the district court commissioner for charges. Case is suspended. On November 11th, at approximately 3:19 PM, deputies responded to the 200 block of Lambert Avenue regarding a fraud. Investigation revealed that the victim's credit card number was used to purchase alcohol. Investigation revealed that the victim's credit card number was used to purchase alcohol in Montgomery County by unknown suspects. Case remains open pending further investigation. On November 16th, at approximately 12:58 a.m., deputies responded to the 100 block of Main Street regarding an assault. Investigation revealed that the victim was struck by a known suspect after the victim threatened to hit the suspect. The victim was referred to the district court commissioner to file their own charges. Case remains open. On November 17th, at approximately 7:31 a.m., deputies responded to the 28 block of Town View Circle regarding a theft. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects stole construction materials from the active construction site. Case remains open. On other comments, on behalf of the sheriff's office and myself, we wish everybody a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, would you like to give the West Carroll Rec Council update, if you would? Or do you have one, or no?
We do not have a, we do not have a report and actually, we're gonna, as of next month, we're gonna have a new director. So, I will invite them to attend our meeting.
All right, thank you. Fire Chief?
No report.
No report. No report.
Yeah, Kevin, you don't have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
All right, move forward to Treasurer Donna Holton.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give a big thank you to Councilwoman Gribben Lindeman for all of her great work on the new wreaths. I think they look wonderful and also for putting together tonight's tree lighting ceremony. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your efforts greatly. After the holidays, the town attorney, town manager, myself, will resume working on the town code to get that updated. And I'm continuing to work on scanning of our old, old documents to our scanning program for protection in that we don't want anything to happen to them. So, that scanning program that we've implemented has been a huge asset. And December is also a big month for me because it's all the year-end stuff, so I'll, well. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we're gonna go to Water and Sewer Billy Kirk. Kalina, what is that?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, on Wednesday, November 24th, I printed and mailed out late notices. There was about 67 of them. And meters are gonna be read the first week of January and bills will be out the second week. Since you guys do not get them by that time, please call me and let me know. That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you. Moving on to code enforcement officer Nicole Felder. Is she available?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. I was off from work for a couple of weeks, so I didn't have any new updates as far as any violations or anything. But my main reason I wanted to come in because I wanted to talk to the council about the next phase of our code enforcement. We wanted to start off with giving warnings to let the community know what we were doing and the plans. And I think at this point, we've passed the warning stages because we've sent out two to three warnings. For the most part, the residents have been compliant, but as with any situation, we have a few that are ignoring the warnings and they're still in violation. And at this point, I really don't see the sense of sending a third warning notice to them whereas we should be moving forward to the fines. And in order for us to do that, it's a few things that the town has to put in place because one of the biggest violations that we have, we have a lot of people with unregistered vehicles on their property. And they've been, now they had about two months to get rid of them and they're still there. And where you have some, some of them have them right on their yards and their land, I mean, on the, in the yards, in the driveways. And then we do have some residents that are actually like hiding the vehicles. They're up in the bushes. And those vehicles are still there and I just feel like they need to be getting fines because we've given them more than enough time to get the vehicles gone. And in order for us to do that, we would have to actually tow the vehicles. We would have to get some type of contract with a towing company or something. And that's why I'm here to let the council know it's a few things that we need to work on so we can move to the next stages. And then another, probably the biggest offense that we have is we have a lot, and it's called nuisance enumerated. I'm just gonna say that because if anyone gets that warning notice from me. But that's about people just having a lot of junk on their porch, on the side of the house, in the front of the house. And we have been getting actually complaints from the citizens calling down here complaining about their neighbor with a bunch of junk in front of the house, on the side of the house. And they've been given numerous warnings that they need to move them. And you have some people that are just basically ignoring them. And that's a violation that they're only supposed to have 72 hours to clear up. After that, they're supposed to be getting a fine every single day that it stays there. And I think we're just not taking advantage of the full, if we're gonna have enforcement, we need to move forward and start giving out fines so the town will know, hey, you gotta clean it up.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor. Yeah, can you repeat that?
Can you repeat that?
I just feel maybe it's something that we should be addressing at the, the next work session meeting.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and have that on the agenda. And we'll get that taken care of then.
Well, while we have a crowd, maybe we can get Michelle's thoughts on this too, a little bit. Well, I don't know the specifics because Nicole and I haven't talked about the specifics. But we have talked, and frankly, we've talked at the council manic level for quite some time, that as is so often the case, most of the people who realize that they're in violation, clear up the violation and we don't have any further problem. But you do reach a point where you have, you have to decide. Frankly, it's you have to decide to give the staff the direction to go ahead and to issue citations. Citations can mean towing of vehicles. Citations can mean going to court. And so there are, there are costs associated with doing these things. There are costs associated with not doing these things. And I think that probably the thing to do would be to compile perhaps some information so that you know what exactly we're talking about. And then, you know, between now and then, maybe you and I can either get together or have a phone chat to figure out the best way to go forward and give you the advice. But I do agree, I do agree, and we've been talking about these things for a long time.
Michelle and Nicole, is there anything in our code that needs to change or is hampering us from moving to the next phase of giving out citations?
I don't really know of anything that's hampering us legally. There are often on-the-ground problems. And by that, I mean things that you can't really see or cars that are covered. But those are, those are probably a small percentage of the issue. The biggest problem from what little you and I have spoken is exactly what Nicole says. People just get the letter and don't open it or throw it out. So you have to, you have to take the next step or the situation's never gonna be remediated.
So, thank you. I was gonna ask, is there, is the meeting to discuss what we do next? Is that, are we developing policy in terms of the way forward? Or do we have that pretty much laid out?
Well, I would say you have the policy because you have the provisions in your code.
Right.
So the real issue now is direction from the council to go forward and do the actual enforcement and what those steps are because those steps are provided in the state law. They're not what we make up.
Okay.
We have to do what they tell us to do.
Follow guidelines. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding that issue? Okay, I'm gonna skip the lehigh update and go ahead and move straight on to new business, which would be mass notification of emergencies to town residents. Is that one of them, Gary?
Yes. Yes, as, as mentioned earlier, the, we need to look at any and all ways of notifying residents during emergencies. Valerie Hawkins was the, was the emergency management center for Carroll County, provided assistance during our water main break, as was mentioned. And they have a, they have a mass notification system called Carroll Alert. It's free. Anyone can sign up for it and receive alerts via text, phone call, and/or email. So Valerie provided the link. I have it here. It's been posted on the town website and Facebook page. It's www.carrollalert.org. So it's free. Go on, sign up, and it's a good way of, of getting notifications during emergencies, so.
And I will add, I, I did sign up because when they were here, it, it's a really neat operation they have. They can, they can pinpoint things down to street names. They could single out certain houses if there's an emergency in, in a certain area. You can sign up for different alerts. They have weather alerts for like snow emergencies and such. So I signed up. I think, I think most people should. It, it's the quickest way of getting an alert for the town or for any, any area. It could, it could be a Carroll County-wide emergency that might show up, so. It's a really neat, neat system.
Now, is that gonna be listed on the new Inser Town page?
It is.
It is. It is.
We have any more comments or questions about that right there? Okay, moving forward to whole business, we have Town Hall virtual meetings and audio solutions. Councilman Cornick?
Well, we have not progressed any further than that. I did send an email to CMC this afternoon or this evening. So our, we're still endeavoring to do that, but it, like I said at the last meeting, it's gonna take a little while to figure out what we're gonna do because I think it's gonna be a lot more expensive than what we initially had thought. So also found out, I did speak with Richard from CMC and there's some legacy information that we gotta dig through. I just haven't had frankly the off, the, the time to do it, you know, during regular work hours. So, you know, I'll keep working on it, so.
And like, like I said before, I'm, I'm willing to help too. I, I could help you anytime.
We can touch base on it because it's gonna take some, I mean, you know, we, I think the former mayor knows that there's a little, been a little history with it too. Not, not bad, but we just need to kind of put the, put the whole thing back together and figure out what direction we wanna go without frivolously spending money on, I mean, we're headed down a path that I thought was good, but I think we just need to dig in and do some more research. It's not that complicated.
We also wanna do it right. We wanna, we want it to be a method where we can reach more residents than just having meetings here. So I think, I think it's very important that we have it and I think we're gonna, like you said the last time, we, we started going down a direction of just, you know, plain microphones. That really wasn't gonna give us the solution that we needed. It, it still would have been the same thing of muting, unmuting, and having this interference.
And frankly, I don't know that we're gonna ever get away from that, you know? I just don't know with, you know, this whole virtual meeting platform is, is relatively new in terms of, I mean, it's been around for, Wawa is new to us. So I don't know that what we're looking for exists. I don't think you're gonna get a seamless, touch-free system. You know, I think there's gonna be some manual operation throughout the, you know? So I don't know that it's gonna get any better than what we have, so we just have to figure that out.
Also reach out.
Pardon, without spending, you know, $60,000, $80,000.
Also reach out to Carroll County. I have some contacts out there that I can reach out. Because I know Carroll County, they, they stream all their stuff live. They record it and they, they have microphones there. It's also in person, so I think they might be a great resource to try to see what they're doing and maybe come up with a solution like that.
Yeah, I mean, so I talked to some, a couple of vendors that I did speak with, you know, supplied AV equipment and, and services for other municipalities. And again, the budget is amazing, you know? $80,000 to $120,000 is not unheard of when you do that. But certainly, I don't think we need to do that, but I just, you know, I'm just saying, I don't know that what we have here tonight is gonna be, you know, I think that might suffice, but we have to see.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, moving forward, we have an update from me on the status of possibly, possible county and/or state funding for the water sewer project. I have a few emails still out there floating around. I have gotten ahold of our commissioner and there is a meeting with him early to the middle of next week. So I'll be, if someone would like to come and join that meeting, you're, you're more than welcome. I can let you know what the exact date is. My calendar's not with me right now.
Do you know a time?
It's gonna be in the AM, yeah. I can let you know here in a few.
Mr. Mayor, can you, is it possible, is it possible that maybe we could have the, you're saying it's a meeting with a commissioner?
Yeah, sorry for that. Yeah, it is. I'm looking at my, my calendar now.
So what I was wondering is, you know, is it possible to have that meeting in the evening? You know, it, it's just really difficult for me and I can't speak for others, but to, to do it during the day.
Well, we, we also have the 15th as the special meeting specifically for water.
No, understood, but I mean, I don't know that we would have the presence of, of the commissioner.
Well, Commissioner Boucher has been out here in some of the meetings in the past. He, he might be willing to.
Okay, I got you. I, I see what you're saying.
And like I said, his, his schedule was filling up so fast that I took the first opportunity that I had. Like I said, he's, he's apparently a very busy person, so.
Understood.
I took the first opportunity that I had. It's on the 9th at 11:00 a.m. It was a Thursday at 11:00 a.m.
Where's the meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Town Hall. Did you hear me? It's right at Town Hall there.
Well, I mean, luckily that'll at least be before the special work session. So hopefully we can get an update there. I know the last time I spoke, it was, there was potential for some of the, the state money that went from the federal government to the county. I, I reviewed the Carroll County article and it actually looked like the, the county received, I originally said $6 million. It's actually $30 million. And they have, in the article, it says that about half of it's been allocated. So they still have, they have projects that exceed the 30 million. They actually have $50 million worth of projects, but that hasn't been allocated yet. So that's still, we still might have an opportunity to get in there. Hopefully that'll be an opportunity on the 9th to obtain some of that funding.
I agree.
Mayor Green, when we were, when we were first dealing with the water main break and we were all emailing, I guess it was Thursday night, it was suggested that you contact Senator Reddy and Delegate Krebs. And I gave you contact information with that, for them. How did that go?
Well, I never heard a response. I've only heard a response from, I believe, the commissioner. Senator Reddy never replied, or he was, I'll have to go back and, and read it again, but it, it wasn't very fruitful. I, I did hear from them and they did say that the county people, the county department of public works was on standby, willing to help us. And that was, like, and when I spoke with Wayne, he already had them there, so it was already rolling.
So, for the purposes of the bigger picture, with the state funding that we're going to need for our eighteen million, I don't, we didn't even talk about what this cost the other night, so I don't know if that's something that we're going to be discussing at some point, but I'm sure there was some significant costs incurred when we, over time, and trucking water from Westminster are the only two things I specifically heard mentioned, but we have to pay for those things, and on top of that, we already know we have eighteen million dollars worth of projects, so as we've talked about before, as the mayor, we need you to be constantly following up with these folks, and I don't think email is the way to do it, I think phone calls, and while we're on the subject, I read an article in the Frederick News Post, I think it was last week, about what Maryland is going to get from the infrastructure bill, and there is water money in there, there's eight hundred and forty-four million dollars to improve water infrastructure that Maryland is going to get, and there's also four point one billion in federal highway aid, and this road that we need to redo out here is a state highway, so, you know, I mean, I don't know how this is going to play out, but we need, this needs to be like a constant drum with these folks of what we need, and here we are knocking on the door, and, you know, I think we'd like to have a real specific report every meeting, how that's going.
Okay, I can get that for you, I can happily, ready for you by the, excellent, see if we get any, you know, action.
Well, I think it's more, I think it's more, I think it's more about sort of getting on their radar, you know, we've got some detailed information that Town Manager Di and Public Works Director Myers have put together for us, so, you know, maybe start by emailing some of that to those, some of these leaders, and saying, I'm going to be following up with a phone call, and, you know, just kind of being a squeaky wheel. I don't think that we're going to, it's not going to be a matter of making one phone call or one email, and somebody writes us a check, although that would be nice, but I don't think that's how it's worked in the past, and I don't expect it will work that way going forward.
All right, that will be taken care of then. All right, so moving forward, we have the Ethics Committee nomination of two new members. I don't have, I have a list, but I haven't contacted these people and asked them if they wanted to participate in this or anything, so I'm not ready to bring them forward to the council yet.
Do you know when you will?
I can have it done by the next town council meeting.
So, I know that, I heard from a member, a citizen already who's interested, his name is Mike Zapp, he lives here in town on High Street, he's a retired police officer, and I think Councilman Hall, you heard from someone as well? Was it you? Someone told me somebody else's name, was it you, Dave? Okay, never mind, I thought there was somebody else that we talked about was possibly interested.
Well, there was, I mean, I had, I had a recommendation, he's here tonight, so, I thought, I thought it was the, I thought others had that same recommendation, so.
Well, maybe we need to get this information in writing to the mayor, since he's working on compiling a list.
I will send him an email.
That we can get, because we need to get this group back together again.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it came to our attention that we're lacking the group, and that needs to be addressed, because right now, we don't have a group.
Just so the citizens know, two people unfortunately passed away that were on this group, so.
So, I guess, the list that you have, can you send it to the council, so that we can see who's on the list, and maybe, because the recommendations might already be on there, we're just not aware of.
No, that's a good point, because, yeah.
Who's on the list, yeah?
Yeah, and again, you know, our charter is pretty vague about how the whole process works, but it does say that I appoint them, so once I have the nominations, I'll bring them forward to you guys, you know, I'll let you know beforehand who they are.
You appoint, Mr. Mayor, you appoint with the approval of the council, it's a joint, it's a joint effort. For almost all appointments.
But, and that just goes back to my original point, you mentioned you had a list of people, could you just send it to us so that we can review them and get, at least so that we can see who it is, and then, and then, you know, form an opinion, because we're going to have to vote on those individuals.
And I asked Mr. Zapp to write a brief bio, so I think for anyone that we're considering, it would be helpful for the mayor and the council to have a bio for that person, to see that they're qualified to be on an ethics commission.
Okay, moving forward, does anybody have any questions or any other comments about that?
Did, oh, sorry, mute. So, are you going to send that list, or not?
I can send you the list, yeah?
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we're going to jump right into residents' concerns.
Good evening, my name's Mark Schultz, resident, live in three oh two High Street, here in Village Center, and I believe its concerns is kind of the topic that we sign up for, but what I most wanted to do was, I've lived here for pretty close to twenty years, and the most significant event, there have been power outages, we have had some heavy snowstorms, but the most significant event that's happened during that time period was this water main break. There was a lot of uncertainty, there was, you know, and as we all know, we have a relatively small staff here, and Public Works Director Wayne really stepped forward, and I know there have been kudos here, and I certainly hope, and this is what I most wanted to talk about, that I certainly hope there's some acknowledgement of that other than just some words, because sixty-three hours of overtime in such a short period, I have staff that don't put that much in in a whole year. So, that's significant. Kalina put in a lot of time and was here. Councilwoman, I don't know the first part, Lindeman was, was here walking around town, was here all day Saturday. Councilman Cornick was off and had something personal, and came back and was walking around and helping out. Councilwoman Schultz was here, was getting calls on Thursday and Friday in dealing with this. Very much understated was the role, and he was very humble, but Councilman Hall was phenomenal. He stepped in, and he filled the leadership void that was missing during this, and that's where my concern is, because I've gone around, Councilman Hoffman wasn't here when we were doing the walk-around, but he certainly was in touch by phone and staying in contact, and who did I leave out? All of the town councils here, we have three new elected people, two of them have gotten the message about being involved in the town. This was a serious event, and fortunately, because of the dedication of one staff person, significantly, and other staff members, and especially the new one, Josh, heaven forbid, he got right in the middle, so, kudos to them, and I keep leaving Kalina out. Kalina brought in her baby, her husband, her father, and they helped walk around to get the message out, so, that's, I think there should be some acknowledgement other than an attaboy. I think it's seen during this meeting, what the concern that I wasn't going to bring up, but being on the town council is not just being here once a month for the public meeting and having the work session, it's what you do in between to get prepared for these meetings, and throughout this meeting, I'm hearing from one individual, I'm going to do it, I'll look into it, I've got this coming. That was a serious event, and there was a significant leadership gap there, and we'd have not had that in this town in my time here, so, it's unfortunate that there's only twenty-two participants, of which I recognize, I don't recognize six, and then there's another six here that I don't recognize. So that's twelve other citizens out of the other, whatever, we have seven hundred, so it's unfortunate that there aren't more people here to see that, but, again, great job, Wayne, and I'm glad that you survived, and thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Neil Rupp.
Neil Rupp, four twelve Church Street. I think it's kind of been answered, but I'd like to have a response from the mayor. Back on, I'll give you a little history, October sixteenth, I was at a celebration that the county had out at the farm museum for seventy-five thousand acres in the farm preservation plan, program, and while I was there, I met with Planning Director Linda Eisenberg, Eisenberg, and Commissioner Frazier and Commissioner Ross Dean, and we got talking about a grant that I put in when I was mayor for five point three million dollars for streetscape through the federal government, and then they got talking, the two commissioners got talking about streetscape and what kind of projects the town of New Windsor had, and I said, well, the water replacement line for Main Street and High Street for the streetscape project, how much was that going to be? I said about four million dollars. They said, well, we would be willing to talk to the town of funding fifty percent of that, that's about two million dollars, and that was on the sixteenth, on the eighteenth, at the work session. I brought it up to your attention, the council's attention, and I'd just like to know what took place after that.
I've reached out to our commissioner, and like I said, I have a meeting with him, I've called and left a message for Senator, I mean, Secretary Brinkley, and haven't heard anything from him, so I can just keep hounding them.
Well, I contacted the two commissioners yesterday, and they had not heard from you, which is very upsetting, and very disappointing. As Councilman Hall says, there is more money there, and there are a lot of projects, there's eight municipalities that probably have projects, if we don't, if the town doesn't ask for it, you're not going to get it. And the meeting on the, on Thursday is the county commissioners' meeting, is that, are you on the agenda?
He's coming up to our town hall to meet with me.
Council, hopefully you are on top of this and reaching out, even to Mr. Di, reaching out to county folks, the sooner we get, the town gets their foot in the door, the better chances you have of getting funding. Now, this is a month and a half ago, this, to me, as a resident, is unacceptable. Unacceptable. A month and a half, and no action was taken on this. We could have gotten in line first. And the other question I have is, the work sessions are now not allowing residents' comments? Can I ask why you have decided that, Mr. Mayor?
That was not a decision that I made, it was a collective agreement that was made for these special work session meetings that we were having about the.
I don't know anything about that.
If I could, we did not decide that, we decided to go back to a work session format, which is a meeting, and certainly residents can be there and have comments, but they're not, it's not the same as this kind of a meeting where there's residents' concerns and people put things on the agenda, just because we got away from actually working at those meetings, but certainly people can make comments, that's my recollection, does the rest of it?
The main, the main difference was, we went back to the original work session format, where we put the desks together, it's more of a planning meeting for the council to work together and figure out things, so, yes, it's not, the first thing is not residents' concerns, like a formal here sign up, but certainly input, there was never a vote that I remember that we.
But hasn't it been on the last two work session agenda, that you're not taking any comments from the residents?
Those are special work sessions.
That was just the special ones.
We're trying to get work, stuff accomplished, that's why we're adding an extra work session meeting, and still maintaining the other, usually still maintaining the regular scheduled work sessions.
I understand the special meetings, but for not allowing residents to speak, I don't want to agree with.
Well, there's, there's nothing that's being discussed at those meetings that isn't discussed at all the other meetings, it's just, I mean, the last one we met, I think we met for three, three and a half or four hours, because we have so much to do, and it's just a matter of getting to the point, I mean, we're having trouble making decisions because we have so much information to process.
I understand.
So it's not about not letting people comment, we're just trying to get some work done, then we'll, and everybody can sit there and hear everything we say, and then we'll talk about decisions at the next meeting, and people can comment, so, it's not, it's not any kind of an effort to show anybody out.
All right. Thank you, but hopefully I made my point across, that I'm very upset, a month and a half, and nothing has been done.
I share your concern.
Thank you.
And we have another.
Matt Fowler. Yes, Matt Fowler, three oh one Church Street, and what I wanted to talk about was raise a concern that I'm seeing, we come, we moved here three years ago from a small town in Tennessee, and one of the things that we were used to was, there was a face to the town that actually was out there always involved in everything that was going on, no matter what it was. I've been to events this year in both the Music in the Main and also watching this recent problem that we have with the water, which I understand was quite a crisis for the small-town event, and everybody was there except for the mayor. I watched people set up for Music in the Main, I also watched them tear it down, I also watched volunteers handing out things in the door-to-door, I saw the alerts coming across, phone calls being made, and even in this meeting tonight, the one thing that I'm not hearing is that leadership face sits there, and so, Mayor Green, I would actually like to see you evolve into being that face of this community, because being elected mayor, it means you represent everyone in the town, and also the town's interest, and I do know that the mayor that, from the small town we came with, it's the same thing down in Tennessee, you've got to be first, you have to be on the phone every day, you have to be at meetings, you have to invite people to places, because it's all about getting out there and keeping yourself recognizable for the town, so that we can get the funding for things that we need done here in this small community. Being seven hundred and something residents does not mean that we have a lot of money that comes in all the time. Yeah, seven hundred households, so you're not going to see the amount of funding coming in, it's there, so we have disposable money to handle emergencies, and it'll eventually come to a point where we are cash-strapped so much that we can't get things done, so I would like for you to be the face of the community for your tenure here, and to, everybody in the community should know who you are, and so should the councilmen, and also so should State Assembly. You should be one of the first ones that's always out there, letting them know what our needs are, and that's what I've got to say tonight.
Thank you for your comments, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, the water main break, I was sick from Friday evening until Tuesday, so I was totally out of it, by that muscle I am right now. There's no excuse, but that's the truth of it.
Wait, can you say that again, sorry, I was typing.
Is there anyone else?
Can, can you repeat that? I actually missed it, I apologize.
Assisting, you know, with Music on the Main, I was there assisting with the, with the 5K run. The water main break, I was sick and in bed. I was in bed from Friday evening all the way up until Tuesday.
That's not what you told us.
Who told us? I was sick.
You, you told us that you were going to a play, and you couldn't be there.
I didn't even go because I was so sick. My own daughter's play, I didn't even go, so, because I was so sick.
Your own daughter posted on Facebook saying that you were helping her do yard work on Saturday.
What is this, Attack of the Mayor here today, or...
Not Attack of the Mayor, I'm just saying.
It doesn't sound like it.
No, he, so he came out and said that he was in bed. That was not true.
I was not doing any kind of yard work. I don't know where you got your information from.
Okay.
Well...
Is there anyone else that wish to speak?
Yes, Betty Windsor.
Betty Windsor, 106 Main Street. And I'm just going to say, I've never seen no collaboration like this is. We're pointing the finger, and we're giving all the responsibility to one person.
That's his job.
I think, I think it's a big responsibility to get all of this funding for here, and I can get a group of people together and help to volunteer to do some of this stuff. Neil, you seem to have a lot of connections. Maybe you can throw some of them in there and...
Has there reached out to me?
Helping? Well, I, I am Neil. You know...
And I, and I've...
You're a town representative?
I'm not a town representative, but I am a town resident and a citizen. And I think that this is big. I don't know why you're putting all the responsibility on one person, and I know he's elected, and...
Is the town working with the mayor?
You know, I'm one of the 650 members that you're asking to pay $18 million, which comes out to like $27,797, I think, $97 to pay for this 18 million in projects. You know what? I'm willing to kick in my ability and my knowledge and my business savvy to help get this funded. I'm not going to sit on my ass and watch it just go down the drain and blame it on one person. I think we all, as a town, need to come together and get this done. And if it comes down to, you've got to delegate, you know, you call on Monday, you call on Tuesday, you call on Wednesday, and just keep hounding this if that's what it takes to get the funding. I think as a community, we all need to pull together and do this.
Somebody needs to guide that.
Can you guide that, Andy?
Let me.
Yeah. And show it.
Thank you.
And show it.
Ms. Betty, I'm going to comment on your comment.
And if the council would work with them.
I'm going, excuse me, I'm going to comment on your comment, if you allow. I appreciate, I appreciate your, your concern and your commitment to, to help. But the problem is that there's a lack of understanding about what these elected positions are. So, you know, when you run for office, you don't run and then you look for it to be a team effort. The position of the mayor is not, the mayor does not have a vote. But frankly, in my opinion, the, the mayor is a strategic position, because they are the spokesperson for the town. It's not putting it all on the mayor. I talked to the mayor after our last meeting, and I told him, I said, you have the opportunity to do great things, but you have to do it. He's not doing it by himself. And to your point about picking on him, this is just frustration, because this, this isn't the first thing. So, so hold on, so hold on. What you need to understand is that that is his role. The executive in any, any segment of government is the head. The president does not have a vote. I laugh at people that scream at the president because they, they think he makes legislation. He doesn't. The president doesn't make legislation. When you come down to the, the mayor, the mayor is the figurehead for the town. So the frustration that you're hearing from the citizens is because it's, I was sick this weekend. I wasn't able to do it this, it's a lot of excuses, and the $18 million is not frivolous spending. Not that you said that, Betty, I'm not implying that, I'm just saying, it is serious. I've said this to the mayor personally multiple times. So the fact that we're questioning whether he had meetings with people that the former mayor talked to him about, it just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating. And I know he's your friend. I li, listen, it's not personal.
I can separate business from personal.
No, 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 hold, I, I'm sure you can, Betty, but I'm saying, this isn't a group effort when it comes to speaking. We can all go try to, you know, do what he's supposed to be doing, but that's not what the job is. The job is for him to lead, okay? It's not for all of us to lead and then he follow. That's not how it works. That is exactly not how government works. And I don't care what segment of government you look in, the county executive, commissioners, mayors, they are the leaders that go out and build the alliances, and we ratify the decisions that they make, that, that we have to decide on. So, you know, listen, you can come to defend him. I feel bad that he's in this situation, but he put himself there. So the fact is, he needs to do his job, okay? And, and, and there's not a person that runs for these offices. If he didn't know that, shame on him. But the fact is, the job needs to be done, and there's no excuses. So I appreciate you attending, I said that earlier, but we're not picking on him. We just said, we're saying, do your job. That's frankly all we're asking.
Is the council allowing him to do his job?
Listen, listen, let me say something to you about that. Nobody is tying anybody's hands to do their job. I have support, I have supported...
Allowing him to do his job.
What do you think, let me ask you this. How would we be prohibiting him from doing his job? Tell me how you, if you're going to ask that question, you're implying that there's something that's prohibiting him from...
Taken from this meeting is that you...
No, from this meeting, we're frustrated. I only talk like this when I'm frustrated and people make excuses. I'm frankly tired of it. So we need to get on with that. He needs to get on with doing his job.
Okay, then do his job, and allow him to do his job.
Let him do his job? Tell me when we haven't. Mr. Mayor, have, has anybody ever prevented you from doing your job?
Got him on mute.
No, I am muted.
I don't believe so. I, I said at the last meeting, I told you. Okay.
Mayor?
Sorry, I had, this is, my daughter was all wrapped up in a cable, a charging cable.
Did, did you hear that? Did you want to respond?
Mr. Mayor, have, has anybody ever prevented you from doing your job? As mayor.
I just don't think that it's a, a, a great team. I just don't see the willingness to, at least from my perspective.
Mayor, now, oh, God. I, I just want everybody to understand that during this water emergency, I ended up taking point, because my first call was to you. I am not trying to attack anybody. I am just stating what I received from you is that you were going to a play. Later that day, your daughter posted saying that you were helping her with yard work, and you took a Saturday to do that. During that Saturday, I was here at town hall making decisions. I did not feel comfortable making those decisions, because I believe they should have been your decisions to make, as, that's what the town code says. I have never stopped you or, or tried to prohibit you from leading. I have always made sure that you're the first call. Wayne calls me, obviously, first, that's the process we have, and I call you, I send out a, a email to the council and, and the mayor, and basically wait for guidance after that. I did not get any guidance. I'm not attacking, I'm not saying, I'm just stating the facts.
In bed, I don't know, you know, I didn't, I was sure it was not doing no yard work on, on Saturday. I didn't even go to my own daughter's play. I was sick and in bed.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, so Mr. Mayor, on, on the three days before Thanksgiving, we had a meeting prior to that, I told you I was taking off, and you said you had meetings with the, the, the county commissioners then. I said, I'm off this week, which is not often, call me if you need me. Never got a call. So I thought, must not have meetings. And then we had the water break. So when, you know, sir, I don't remember your name, but, you know, when you talk about prohibiting, or you should let him do his job, I offered to help him do his job. I'm not, listen, I have nothing to gain to see, by him failing, none of us do. Here, here's what we have to, have, what, this is what happens when we don't get the water bill situation straightened out. Our water rates go up. Why would I sign up for that? This is, this is personal and selfish. I want the rates to go down, but I certainly don't want them to go up, so why would we do anything to prohibit him? That doesn't make sense. So the fact is, we all have reached out. I know Councilman Hall has, I know, we all have. It doesn't, we don't even need to point and say individuals. We all have been supportive. But the fact is, we're not getting anything done. So, and, and, and you know what? I'll take it a little step further. I know other stuff is going on in, on, and outside of this, I just know other stuff is going on, and that stuff is, that foolishness is getting done, but the stuff that needs to get done isn't getting done. And everybody here knows what I'm talking about. Foolishness gets done, and I hear about that, but I don't hear about the good stuff that needs to get done. So I don't want to hear that somebody's preventing anything.
Come on, I'll have a speaker here.
Absolutely.
You have to state your name and address.
Frank Windsor, 106 Main Street. Andy's been on Facebook a lot, for the goodness he's done, all these...
I know he was sick on Saturday, because he did the Read Across America fundraiser with us, and he did not come in because he was sick on Saturday.
He was sick. He ran the 5K.
I know for a fact.
That's not helping the town.
He didn't set up.
No, you said he wasn't up there. He ran the 5K.
He did run the 5K.
Yes.
And Music on the Main, I was under the understanding it was already done by...
Music on the Main, he was up there, he was up there.
Music on the Main was already done by the former mayor, and he took that this year.
Yeah. Here, here's the deal. No one's saying he didn't...
He's everywhere. Andy's everywhere. He's been all over Facebook.
Listen, hold on, hold on, let me say something. Here, who cares about Facebook? I don't care about Facebook. Who cares about Facebook? We're talking about...
You're upset his popularity is way up.
What are you talking about?
If we had an election right now, he would win again.
Who cares?
You do.
No, I don't.
Yes, you do.
Listen, Frank, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, I do.
Frank, listen, I said, hold on for a second. Frank, Frank, Frank. I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, and I don't care about popularity on Facebook. I'm talking about the cost of the water bills in this, in this community.
The cost of the water bill started a long time ago, when there was nothing for that.
And the way you fix it is to get funding, because otherwise, you all will be back here saying, look what the water...
But you can't blame that on somebody that's always been in office this day.
We're not blaming him. What, what part of, what makes you think we're blaming him?
Put all of that in his lap, that there's no funding thus far.
His job, listen, listen, his job, five, once and for all, is to go be the head.
And he is.
How?
He's everywhere. Look at it, he's all over Facebook doing good.
Facebook.
That might not mean nothing to you.
It means absolutely nothing to me.
Obviously, y'all want $18 million. Why, I don't know.
What?
Y'all, y'all just want this $18 million.
What are you talking about? We need the money to pay for the water bill, the water system.
And you have to have it right now.
No, that's never been, so in every meeting...
You have to have it right now.
No, every meeting we have, it's a total of $18 million. The only one that we're voting on is $4 million.
You're giving him a hard time right now, really hard.
Because he didn't participate in the, in, he's dropped the ball. Listen, I was there with him during that run, I saw him there. Nobody's saying he never does anything.
I'm right over there, said he wasn't up there.
Okay, he was there. He was there. Andy, who hung out with you the most? I did. This is what offends me, because you guys are coming in here saying this stuff about us being, I hung out with the guy the whole day.
I didn't say anything until everybody in here is saying...
You're all jumping on him for something that happened for years and years that...
Listen.
You're working with the mayor, that's all I have. Is the council working with the mayor?
And what did I say? And what did I say?
He's working very hard.
I hope you would be working.
What, but, I...
And he drops the ball. I was the one that brought the attention of, to, the attention to him about county funding. I even reached out and offered to contact a good friend of mine, who is the secretary of budget management for the state of Maryland. That, that, that man there has control of what was a $200 million surplus from last year. I talked to him about getting money for New Windsor. I asked the mayor if he wanted me to reach out to Secretary Brinkley. Not heard back.
This ruling isn't getting anything done. I think it, it needs to, you know, who needs to be contacted, what needs to be happened, start delegating stuff out for everybody to do.
Betty, that's not how it works. It's not, it, he...
Nobody needs any help ever.
No, no, don't, listen, listen, listen.
Andy's the only one that can do this.
It's clear.
Listen, listen.
I'm not saying it's not his job.
No, 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 listen, listen to what I'm saying to you. Delegation is when you have people working, we don't work for the mayor. That's not how it works.
No, you work for the residents.
Absolutely. But the thing is, the mayor seeks the funding. The mayor, we put, the, we're, the town manager has put together, put together a list of priority projects, so that when we have another catastrophe like we had over Thanksgiving, we can get those things straightened out. Listen, listen.
I don't see them think that water thing's fake.
I don't care what people...
That's what they say, it's fake.
Listen, listen.
I'm telling you, I've seen it on Facebook.
It's not fake, trust me.
I'm not saying it is, I'm telling you, that's what they're saying.
Well, that makes absolutely no sense.
Listen.
Okay. Like, I've been asked this question, have my water changed? My water never got cloudy, it never lost pressure, it never...
So, so I said to the mayor, I said these, I said these words, please, for a second. I said these words to the mayor. If you don't know the process, let me know. Never got a call. I don't expect that somebody who's never run an organization as a head of an organization, I don't expect that he knows everything, but it doesn't make sense that the resources are there and he doesn't ask for help. The former mayor's right there. If he went to the former mayor, we, the problem is, we got to let go some of the egos and let him go to the former mayor and say, hey buddy, what do I do? It's nothing, is there anything wrong with that?
I don't think there's an ego issue.
Did he ever ask the mayor? Mayor, did you ever ask the mayor?
I'm sure he can get funding. He's capable of getting funding.
He's capable of getting funding. I see him as capable. When we had the water problem, he called everybody, and Ali Rich, he called me, he called everybody. I know that.
Okay.
You act like he did nothing.
I didn't act like that.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't, man.
Okay.
You know, whatever.
He did. I guarantee he called more than everybody in here.
Okay, okay, but he, but, he didn't...
I know he did.
Yeah, I, how, where, where are your facts?
Where, where was this, why are you speaking for him?
You know, I'm not going to, excuse me for a second, I'm not going to sit here and have our public works director disparaged by people saying that this water main was fake.
I'm not saying it was fake.
I'm just, I just want to, so for everybody who's listening, this young man...
If you live your life off Facebook, we live it all.
This young man worked, what do we say, 100 hours, and the reason nobody lost pressure is because he worked for 100 hours. And everybody on this council and every member of the staff, other than Donna, who does nothing to do with water and was sick herself, did something this weekend, so that this town would not lose water. It was a real crisis, and, and I, and I'm also not going to sit here and say we're not a team, because if you want to see a team, it was the people that pulled together last weekend, so you didn't lose your water. That was the team. People who gave up their own personal plans for the day, canceled family... People who gave up their own personal plans for the day, canceled family events, almost missed a baby shower, you know, on and on and on. This is not, this is a group of people who have always worked as a team. And I don't know what was going on with the mayor, but he told Councilman Hall that he couldn't come because he had a play to go to.
And he was sick.
Well, that's, this is the first time any of us are learning that he was sick. Okay, well, why didn't he tell the council that?
I'm sure he did.
You have to ask him that.
Yes, sir.
Say your name and come on up and...
I'll write it.
What are you doing?
I don't, I don't, I don't really like to sit, I sit a lot. My name's Austin Fogarty, I live at 1208 Joe Apter. I've just kinda been sitting back, just kinda observing the town, the atmosphere. And some things are concerning to me. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, now that you understand the weight and the totality of leading a team of very capable individuals here like the council is, knowing that, do you feel capable, that you have the drive, desire, determination to do what needs to be done as the mayor, as the figurehead of this team moving forward? Or do you think that's something that maybe you didn't prepare well for? Or maybe didn't grasp the understanding of what would be expected of you as our mayor?
I have the ability to, to do the job.
Could you just give me some examples of how you, you're gonna move forward, hopefully in a positive way to lead, lead this team here in a way moving forward that would be, that would just be good and, and helpful?
The town needs funding for these projects that we have coming up. I know this, everyone knows this, okay? You know, getting ahold of these people, you know, from these other agencies of government is a li, is a little tricky. It's, 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 you know, and if I put an email, I mean, I can send an email out every day. I can make a phone call every day.
I, I realize that's tricky. Good. Now, I know it's tricky. I guess I would also just wanna know, like, are you willing to reach out for help? Maybe just humble yourself. I know it's, it's tough reaching out to other people who might know more or maybe you do know the most and then just reaching out to other people like the town council or, or other people, the previous mayor. Just being able to ask for help, saying, "Hey, guys," or "girls," or whoever have, really don't have a full handle on what's going on. "Can you guys help me lead more effectively so we can get this funding for our water bills? Because it is gonna have an impact on our community for years to come." Is that something that you're willing to do moving forward?
Oh, my bad. Terrible. You're unmuted now, Mayor.
No, I have no, I have no initial concern with that, no.
Okay. Well, and I guess I just wanted to say, I appreciate everyone's efforts with the water main break. I know it was a lot, it's a team effort, so I appreciate everyone that stepped up. I know we have personal lives, I'm not here to get up on a soapbox or something. We're all imperfect people, trying to work together the best we can in just the best team way we can. The only way we're gonna do this is the town, so we come together. We don't, you know, I know it's, we wanna blame people for things. We're kinda like in a position right now, the council and leadership, I think, is just kinda lacking effectiveness in how we're just communicating with each other maybe. But if that's something that I would really appreciate as a citizen, if you guys could just work on and maybe improve, I'm not saying you're not doing it. I heard that you got money back for the, the shipping for the reese. That's awesome, great work. I'm really glad it worked out. So I just wanted, I just, I'm gonna be living here for a long time and I'm looking to you guys to lead, even the mayor, whether you feel you're capable enough right now or something you're gonna work towards. It's all a learning process. But it's just definitely, we definitely have to just come together, I think, humbly. Moving forward, I think we need to like a, almost like a restart. But you all do, do what you want, but I'll be here to help out as best I can, just as a citizen, in any way that you guys need, because I really wanted to succeed. So I appreciate you giving me a couple of minutes, probably more than I needed to talk. So, but thank you for all your efforts. And Mayor, I look forward to seeing you, you know, grow and develop as a good leader of this town. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Austin. Very well said.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I would like to say something. You know, I've been sitting here listening to all this and, and I think bottom line that we need to address is that we do have all these bills coming up for these water issues. We do have people that are so qualified to help us get this funding. And all it takes is for someone to say, "Will you help me, please?" Or, "Will you help the town?" Can't we do that? Can't we do that tonight? We have the former mayor right here, we have the mayor and council right here. I know I personally would love to have help from someone who has the contacts like the former mayor. Is it possible that we make that request to the former mayor now? He may not, he may or may not want to do this, but maybe we can make that request and that would start us on the road to where we need to go.
I'll ask him right now.
I offered a month and a half ago.
It's not, it's not something that, that someone needs to be... You know, I've, I've given him his space to move forward with his life and if he wants to be involved in a system, by all means, I'm asking you right now.
You mean, for the past two months, you haven't seen my willingness to help?
Are we attacking the mayor again or?
Gotta go forward, Neil, go forward.
You asked your question, thank you.
I, I'm asking again for your assistance.
I said, yes, how do you want it?
Do you have time tomorrow where we can speak?
Not during the day.
In the evening?
No, I'm putting up Christmas decorations at the church. You wanna stop up there?
Most certainly.
That's awesome. I wanna thank you both for coming together and making a plan because that's how we're gonna get started on this. And that's what we wanna do. We wanna get started and move forward. So any positive step we can make, I think, is the way we need to go. So I wanna thank both of you for making that effort and let's work from there.
Mr. Speaker? In that case, it is now 8:36 and I move for German.
Council makes the motion.
I'll make that motion. Second?
All second.
All voters in favor?
Aye.
I side with 5-0.